Good evening. I'd like to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on this Tuesday, November the 17th. Ask Commissioner Richardson, Vice Chairman Richardson, if you will open us in prayer.
Yes, sir. Well, Jesus, we come to you. Blessings you. Up at the time of the year to celebrate what we're thankful for. In this county and it's struggling with illness. Justin. Praying your prayers.
Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance by republic for which a nation, God, is well, liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show, we have a full quorum of commissioners. Commissioners, you have the minutes from the previous meetings in the folder, once from November 3rd, 2020, November 8th, 2020 Planning Advance, and also the November 8th, 2020 Planning Advance Detective Session. If they meet with your approval, I'll accept a motion all at once.
Motion to approve?
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We just want to welcome everyone to the commission meeting tonight. Wanted to call out Sheriff Clay Whittle. Glad you're here, Sheriff, to support your team. Thank you for all you do for the county. And we go into, we have a lot of special recognitions tonight, which is really I'm going to ask Commissioner Malier to September 2020 Employee of the Month, Brian Cook.
So much. Hey, Brian, it's nice to meet you. Want to, want to tell you that you've got a team of folks who are very proud of you. For those of you who don't know Brian, he is a fire apparatus technician, is that correct? And recently, we had an opening for a supervisor to supervise generators, is that, am I to have it right? And so, we needed someone to step up and work on generators, and we have 80-plus generators around the county that needed service, and without someone to do that, we were in a world of hurt. And Brian stepped up selflessly, and worked nights and weekends and on-call, and did all kind of great things to make sure that those were serviced and taken care of. And your team has recommended you for Employee of the Month. Glenn, do you have anything to add?
I just want to say that, Brian, your division director's at home completely broken. Your, your department head is in Ohio looking at fire trucks. Your immediate boss is with your department head looking at fire trucks. So that makes you the Internal Services Division Director.
All right. That'll feel promotion.
Thank you. They promised they would take you to dinner when they get back for missing this. But I want to present you with this plaque for Employee of the Month. Now, you're also going to get $100 with taxes taken out, I always have to say that. You get a day off with pay, and you get your name on that, on that plaque over there, and join the rest of the folks who have been recognized as Employee of the Month. So thank you so much for all your hard work, and congratulations.
Next, we have Mr. Galius is going to award the 2020 team of the third quarter, the MOC Restoration Team. Come on down, guys.
One of the things we're very proud of in Columbia County is that we have services and personnel who give our people a great measure of feeling safe in their community. And when they don't feel safe, they don't go out and do all those wonderful things that we're proud of each other for. So we're going to acknowledge and recognize the team tonight, the Mobile Operations Center team, and Mr. Granano, you want to come? He knows farm. I've, I've seen them, and they've, they've given me the courtesy of looking at their facility and their operations. But you're in contact with them day after day, so you have the most to say about them.
I don't need the mic. Okay, dude. Basically, I, I just wanted to say thank you. This started way before I became Director. This started, like, basically at the same time as COVID, when they had a little bit of extra time, they decided to redo the MOC so they could use it. It has basically been a $200,000 paperweight for about 10 years, right? So they just decided that, hey, this is what we need to make it happen. And the major and his captains and Brent and everybody, and I'd like to thank the sheriff for allowing these guys to do this, Chief, you too. Scott ponied up all the money to make it happen. The difference is, is these guys put their blood, sweat, and tears into it for days and weeks, you know, weekends, and it cost the county about $52,000. And I will put it up against Augusta Richmond's for $1.3 million any day of the week. The people that put it together are the people that are going to use it. Like, the major was pulling a string on a sweater, and it just kept going, and kept going, and made it the way that they wanted to. So now they argue over whose it is, and they're going to pass the cup around, just like they're going to pass the MOC. So thanks to all y'all, this is the least I could do. I got to take y'all to lunch, so I figured that we'll do it at the cafeteria at the sheriff's office. I mean, maybe something a little bit nicer. Thanks, y'all, I really appreciate it.
I believe the sheriff probably has some comments.
Sheriff, do you want to, want to add some?
I will get the mic, so don't jump on me. I just want to reiterate what Sean said, because we've talked about this a long time. We discovered through use, or attempted use with this, this vehicle's been out of date for a really long time. There was, there were certain things in there that was not operational. This is supposed to be a multi-purpose Mobile Operation Command Center, not only for Columbia County, but to assist surrounding counties, and it wouldn't function that way, because it was so old and out of date, and some of the equipment in it had, had literally failed. What you're seeing tonight, which is something I didn't know, was we had this many technicians that are actually capable of doing some very high-tech things. Folks, they literally tore this vehicle apart. They dismantled the interior, because the interior did not function well in a, in a multi-agency crisis where people have to have a workflow that's smooth and quick in order to make things work. The, the few monitors that were inside did not operate properly. One monitor had to be hooked up by itself, nobody else could look at it. The, the things that we all take for granted in our offices each day as we work out here. Now, these people literally took it apart from something that was not, I repeat, not functional, and they've turned it in for basically $52,000. Sean's been keeping the books with, with the lady here that, I, I can't even imagine that we could do what we did with $52,000, and it, and it truly can compare with a brand-new one we just saw that, that sells for $1.3 billion. And these folks did it. Now, I will tell you this, although they used a lot of their own personal time and stayed nights, weekends, I would pull up on Saturday evenings up there at the driving training facility, and, and all these folks would be there, and they would be in their civilian blue jeans and stuff, and they would be covered in grease, dirt, oil, you name it, have wires sticking out of their back pockets and stuff. I mean, it got to be comical. Thank goodness we had, and where's Anthony? I don't see Anthony here tonight.
In Ohio.
Our Fleet Services Supervisor was, was the guy that saved them on all the mechanical stuff, constantly doing this. This was so long that it took them to finally get this. The rumor is, is that they all have a permanent mailbox up there at the driving range now. But I just wanted, again, to say thank you. This truly is the epitome of what a group effort does. You know, we always award this to a team, but this guy's, this is a Columbia County team, and they proved that anybody that, that really wants to do something can come together in a team, and I tell you, only in Columbia County would you see it happen. I congratulate them.
Would like the citation and the you hoist it on high. Plagatory picture, I'm sorry.
Sean, get in the picture. Next, we have the Georgia EMIS to present an award to the County GIS. I think Larry Hobbs is going to be involved in that, so come on down.
Good evening, Chairman Duncan and Committee Commission. My name is Steve Sykes. I am the First Vice President of Georgia GMS Board, which is Georgia Chapter of Government Management Information Sciences. I currently serve as the Director of Technology Services for the City of McDonough. I'm here with Mr. Hobbs, of course, our Executive Director and past President. Larry serves, as you well know, as a wonderful GIS manager for Columbia County. And we also have our second Vice President on a WebEx session here, so he could be here, Mr. Michael Hicks, he's the CIO of College Park. We, we wish we could have gotten more people in person, but with COVID and other things going on, we were just not able to get more folks here. Georgia GMS is a group of technology professionals from across the state of Georgia. We are, these include state, local, and county governments. And I hope you'll take time to visit gagms.org for more information on our events and the education opportunities that we, that we provide to membership to help grow each member. And I'm here on behalf of GMS Board to present Columbia County with our Government to Citizens Award for the 3D City Model Project that they submitted. We wish to recognize Ms. Grace Jansen and Ms. Judy Ann Hartman, for, they were project leaders on this endeavor. The Columbia County 3D City Model Project was also submitted to GMS International, and they won that award handily. So we're, we're very, very proud of efforts both by Columbia County, by the staff that is here, and congratulations on a job well done. Have a nice plaque for them.
Very nice.
I don't know whose office it's going in, but
Probably theirs.
Theirs. Y'all snuggle and get a picture. Just another example of, of employees at Columbia County and how they go above and beyond, and there, appreciate everything you guys do, so thank you very much.
Microphone, microphone.
Please do.
One of the challenging aspects of working with the GIS Department, I found out of great things to say about them, I have to keep obviously, one of those moments that they got toward and project that they did, but wasn't explained before. Project was sent to them at the holidays, and they had to learn all new skillsets. Hadn't really done a lot of 3D modeling on the GIS side before, so when this nobody then said, well, we can't do it or of, well, okay, we got a challenge, let's tackle it. And they got it done. Got it done with flying colors and got one of the better departments, not in the state country. Work that they put in. I'm very proud of the GIS.
Somebody's requested to speak, Matthew, I think that where's Matthew? We'll, we'll get, we'll get to you when we get to your issue. Okay, next, we have a proclamation. Commissioner Malier is going to read for the chamber about Small Business Saturday.
Thank you. Christmas season is upon us, and we're all about to start shopping for gifts, and I hope you will, come on up here, Russell, think about our local and small businesses as you're out shopping. There we have a proclamation from the Commissioners proclaiming next Saturday is Small Business Saturday. Now, Russell is new, he took, he took Tammy Shepherd's place, and he is leading the Columbia County Chamber, and he's doing so far so good. We're teaching him how to talk, because he's not from here, y'all. How long have you been here? Three months. He's learning. What, what have you learned about living here versus California? Anything interesting? Good answer.
That was smooth, really smooth.
Good answer, good answer.
All right. I know that we've had a lot of, a lot of things to read today, but I'm going to quickly read this proclamation. Whereas Columbia County, Georgia celebrates our local small businesses and the contribution they make to our local economy and community, and whereas 44 cents of every dollar in Columbia County is spent in retail and local retail sales exceed $1.6 billion annually, didn't know that, and whereas the number of business licenses in Columbia County is 4,780, many of which employ less than five people, and whereas 90% of business establishments in Columbia County employ less than 50 employees, whereas small businesses employ over 55% of the working population of the United States, and whereas Columbia County Chamber of Commerce represents 1,000 members and is member-driven, business-focused, and for these businesses. Whereas the Columbia County Board of Commissioners, along with the Columbia County Chamber of Commerce, support our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve the quality of life. Now, therefore, getting to the end, the Columbia County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 28, 2020, as Small Business Saturday in Columbia County, Georgia, and to encourage all citizens to support small businesses and merchants during Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed and sealed the 17th day of November, 2020. So thank you for all you're doing, thank you to the chamber and all your representatives, thank you Tiffany's here with us today, and we want to support you, and happy to make that proclamation. Come on.
Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. All the items on this agenda have been through the necessary committees and received the votes to be placed on the consent agenda. So if they still meet with your approval, I'll accept a single motion to approve them all.
Motion approved, sir.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Consent agenda carries. On to the debate. Senator Allen, do you have the first one?
Yes, sir, we have one item of unfinished business. I would like to make a motion to approve the request to postpone RZ 20-10-01 to the December 01, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. They have asked it to be
Second.
Pat, any comments?
Yes, sir.
Fair enough. All in favor to the table, raise your right hand. Mr. Malier.
Chairman, I have a, a motion, and since I've already read the proclamation, I'm not going to read it again, but
Thank you.
I make a motion to proclaim November 28th as Small Business Saturday in Columbia County, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to support these small businesses and merchants.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Back to you, please.
Sir. Item I-2-B-1, I would like to make a motion to approve the request for conditional use for massage or tax map 072047, subject to the condition enumerated in the November 5th, 2020 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is for zoning use of massage, and it's only for the one suite in this parcel. It's not the entire parcel, only suite two.
And it is replacing an existing, a previous business that
Correct. They previously had massage's location, however, the zoning rules were changed, requiring conditional zoning, additional use by zoning for massage. When they let their license lapse, did not renew it, they are now required to follow the new ordinance, so they're bringing their, the suite 201 into compliance with the new zone.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Item I-2-B-2, sir, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request for the rezoning from RA to M1 for tax map 029018.
Second.
This is for a warehouse and a pole barn for a Hefner Pool Company. There'll be a conditional, I'll be a variance associated with the zoning if you are implied to approve the zoning coming. Talk more about it then.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Item I-2-B-3, I would like to make a motion to approve the requested variance to Section 90-139 buffer and screening for tax map 02918C, subject to the condition enumerated in the November 5th, 2020 Planning Commission Report.
One second.
This is a variance to our buffer requirement to reduce the buffer down to 10-foot along the south and west property lines. This is on your screen there, this is to the bottom of the page and to the left of the page, which they are currently joined to the DOT's lay-down yards. You'll see a lot of highway materials stored there. To the north, it is a residential area, so that we are not waiving that buffer requirement
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Item I-2-B-4, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of variance to Section 90-93, 98, List of Lot and Structure Requirements for Tax Map 073372, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 5th, 2020 Planning Commission Report.
Second.
This is a rezoning request to go from residential to the CC. The intended use is a restaurant and a retail store, about a three-acre site, inch upon in the rear. This does abut residential property to across the street as, as commercial and all, all three corners.
This is how this was set up. Think there was some conversation earlier. Businesses may be reverberating, something is this final, or do we know yet?
This, this is just the zoning concept. When they come in with actual plans, we'll have more detail. I don't think this actually would lock them into the setting of the buildings, it's just concept of how it could look.
Motion is to approve, is there anything? Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? S is four to one.
I make a motion to approve the request of variance to Section 90-98, List of Lot and Structure Requirements for Tax Map 073372, to remove the front maximum building setback in the Evans Center Overlay District.
Second.
This is removing the maximum front setback, which means we're allowing them to push the building further away from the road. Originally, it was intended to have the parking behind the buildings, which is why the minimum and the max were set up. Over this lot does not allow that to happen, so staff recommend this approval.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries?
Item I-2-B-6, I make a motion to approve the request for variance to Section 90-144, Placement of Buildings and Structures for Tax Map 077H605, to permit a fence and retaining wall over six feet in height within the side building setback, subject to the conditions enumerated in the November 5th, 2020 Planning Commission Report. Same motion?
Aye.
I would rather it be a different motion. That is the motion.
For a second.
One second.
This is a situation where a property owner is having your house built. We do not, our code does not allow a fence over six foot tall in the setbacks. This will be taller than six foot, it'll be close to 10-foot tall when you have the retaining wall and the fence in certain locations. It's not a constant grade, it does vary based on the location on the, on the property. And they are putting a pool in their backyard, they are required to have it fenced in. Happy to answer any questions I can about it.
So the wall is counting, counting as simply because the fence is going to be on top of it, or why is
It's the, the structure itself can't be over six foot, and there's places where the structure, the wall itself is over six foot tall. Then you put a fence on top of that.
So that gets you
Correct.
The wall is to, to, for all purposes, to become a false grade from the, from the house, correct?
Correct, it's a retaining wall.
So the fence will be uniform in nature?
Correct. My understanding is, I hadn't heard anything different.
Can, can you elaborate why there is an application for a waiver of fee?
I'm going to let Mr. Strawberry talk a little bit about his role and what was going on, and Scott, if you have anything to add.
We received the application for the, for the retaining wall there, for the, make the grade appropriate so that they could put the pool in. On the application, we did notify, we had written on the notification or written on the application that any walls within the setbacks, maximum height is six feet. With that application, that gave them the, the opportunity to build that site up to the six-feet height without hindering them from coming in and waiting on approval from you all to be in, in, above the six-feet in height. So they were, obtained the permit, started building, and the building, like I said, you see what we have there now, was in excess of, well, about eight feet.
Guess the issue is the plan showed the wall being taller than six foot, but it was also a notable plan that said you can't exceed six foot. So I guess there might have been some confusion on their part. Good there. Anything?
And yes, that, the wall, the wall detail showed anything up to a certain height, three different walls, because based on the height of the, the wall, footing widths were, was greater. If you wanted to build above eight feet tall, you know, the, the footing width became a little bit larger. Like I said, without making them wait until they, they had approval for the variance, we went ahead and approved the permit, but did state on the application, wall height within the setback has been maximum of six feet.
Mr. Schlock, do we have any input from the neighbors?
Did receive a neighboring property owner sent an email to Mr. Cox, Chairman of the Planning Commission, in support of the variance. One I'm aware of, there might, was there any others? That's only what I'm aware of.
The opposition at
Any other?
Yes, a separate, and then we'll have a separate motion regarding their waiver.
Correct. So is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand? All opposed? Carries?
Joining that, sir, I would like to make a motion to deny the request for a waiver of the application.
Second.
Question? All in favor, raise your right hand?
Work went into it. Have to pay our people.
Mr. Richardson, I believe we move to you.
Hold on for a minute, this is just a book. I make a motion to approve the first reading of Resolution 20-31 SLD 526 for Anderson Farms, Phase 1, an upfront pole cost of $1,123.71. Phase 1, upfront pole cost of $1,123.71, annual utility cost $3,373.20, and a developer contribution of $2,580. Resolution 20-32, SLD 509 for Clanton Park, with an upfront pole cost of $3,277.33, annual utility cost of $1,471.68, and a developer contribution of $3,540. Resolution 20-33, SLD 508A for Crawford Creek South, Section 7, with an upfront pole cost of $1,554.66, annual utility cost of $2,943.33, and a developer contribu, and a developer contribution of $2,280. Resolution 20-34, SLD 508 for Crawford Creek South, Section 7B, upfront pole cost of $1,872.76, annual utility cost of $8,800, excuse me, $840.96, and a developer contribution of $240. Resolution 20-35, SLD 507 for Emerson at Crawford Creek, Phase 6, with a upfront pole cost of $4,601.90, annual utility cost of $2,102.40, developer contribution of $4,320. Resolution 20-36, SLD 429E for Indian Springs, Section 3, Phase 3, with an upfront pole cost of $6,086.47, cost of $1,733.12. Resolution 20-37, SLD 513C for Caleri, Caleri, Section 4, with an upfront pole cost of $9,831.99, annual utility cost of $4,415.4, and a developer contribution of $3,080. Resolution 20-38, SLD 513F for Caleri, Lori, Section 6, with an upfront pole cost of $4,213.71, annual utility cost of $1,892.16, developer contribution of $1,740. Resolution 20-39, SLD 505 for River Oaks, Phase 1A, with a front pole cost of $7,491.4, annual utility cost $3,362.84, developer contribution of $1,640. Resolution 20-40, SLD 505B for River Oaks, Phase 1B, with an upfront pole cost of $7,022.85, annual utility $3,153.60, and a developer contribution of $2,640 for the installation of streetlights.
Do you have a second, or do you want, want him to reread it?
I'll second.
Who can?
That is a record, I think.
I have to second that. Yeah, that may be the.
You have a motion and a second? Connie, second? Any other discussion? All in favor for streetlights, raise your right hand. Any legal matters?
No legal matters tonight.
No requests for my committee, any public comments or participation? Do you have executives, executive session items, which I think we can deal in the open and rock on through? Y'all agree with that?
I make a motion to approve a 2% lump sum merit payment to be distributed to all eligible employees prior to January 1, 2021, as presented in attachment A, and a 2% cost of living increase to all eligible employees as presented in attachment B, to be applied on the pay period ending January 2, 2021.
Second.
And this is obviously is the increase in merit for our employees who've done such a fantastic job, which we greatly appreciate. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, raise your right hand.
I make a motion to approve $6,800 to Jones Creek Investors LLC, Parcel 64, $171,000 to 2007-27 LLC, Parcel 1043,361 to Columbia County. Parcel 117, temporary and permanent right of way and or ease, widening, road widening project.
Second.
Pat, how far are we?
They were down to our last three.
You're kidding me.
Yes and no.
There's a little, little.
I didn't give you permission to speak.
I have, you know, a few, a few cases I gotta deal with, and we have, it has to be released, but we have an agreement with the property owners. I mean, there's, the harder ones are left, but as far as where we have agreements, there's something.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
I make a motion to approve $14,000 to Johnny and Susan Water, Parcel 16, $1,396 to West Grove LLC, Parcel 47, to obtain temporary and permanent right of way and or easements for Horizon South Parkway Road Widening Project.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve the donation from Columbia County, Parcel 23 and 24, to obtain permanent right of way. Horizon South Parkway Road.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. I think that brings us to the end of our agenda. I just want to encourage folks, you know, as the weather turns and it gets cooler, the flu season, so please be responsible. Wear a mask where you think you should. Columbia County, I've says, is the land of the free and the home of the personally responsible, so take care of yourself, care of your family, and if you have family members who's at high risk from, from the virus, please make sure they shelter in place and take care of themselves, time that we just have to get through. Also, do want to thank our Board of Elections. They did an outstanding job working through this very interesting election time. I know we went through the audit, and it came up clean as a whistle, which was fantastic. Know that our systems are buttoned down, and Glenn just want to thank you for your efforts in working with them.
Mr. Chairman, we do have several members of leadership Columbia County in our audience tonight. You may want to recognize.
Well, I didn't realize you were here. Please stand up if you're, holy moly. I thought you were just interested citizens.
Have a handful.
Do us a favor, tell us, tell us, give us your name and where you work. Welcome here. Welcome. Glad you guys are here. Oh, oh. I didn't see you there. Keep the IT running, all right? And also, thank you for attending. Hopefully, you learned something about property acquisition.
My calls.
Also welcome Don Skinner, our future commissioner, who'll start with us in January.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to echo what we, all the people we recognized earlier and different teams and the different departments that come together and work on so many things for the betterment of Columbia County. It's everybody pulling together, and I really thank y'all for what each and every one of y'all do.
Everybody realizes how amazing it is out here. It's crazy good. Well, there's only one more motion that needs to be made, and I'm sitting here waiting on it.
I see no need to do that. Mr. Chairman, I motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that one, too.
All in favor, we adjourn. Thank you.